The microphone, I'm live.
And you have been to that came from me all of a sudden, so I was at an event and that God had said that she was at the camp. They just want us to, oh, you know, okay. And I asked if I said, you know, there was a camp like that, maybe one of us would have showed up. But I don't think it was any big deal though. I was just asking. I just wanted one of us to show up. But no, it wasn't like, you know. I never, it was never, no. It was just, I was just, I was, didn't wait that back. Because it came fast.
We gotta communicate better. We gotta get that. Thank you for this. Thank you for this.
Good evening and welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. It is Monday, January 8th, 2024, at approximately 6:00 PM. Please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. This time, I'd like Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor from District 1 to deliver the invocation, and Commissioner Ryan Bolden from District 4 to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you would stand me for a moment of silence before we start. Lord, we come to you this evening with a lonely heart and a hurt heart. The Sheriff's Department and all of Spalding County is mourning the loss of one of our own. We ask you not only to be with the Sheriff's Department and with the employees of Spalding County, but be with the community, to help the community to understand the outpouring and the importance of us being able to have law enforcement officers to protect us. We ask you to be here in this meeting. Give us patience. Give us understanding. Give us direction on how we can make the best decisions that will take us into '24. Lord, we're on the verge of something big and something good, and you always have something ready for us. Make us willing vessels so that that can happen. We ask these things of you in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
If you would please do a minute pledge allegiance to our flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. This is going to be a series of appointments, which will take us a little while to go through organization by organization. Can you hear me now? So this will be a little while as we go through organization by organization and time, person by person, to be able to do this. If you'll just, I know there's, everybody's interested in their own name and stuff like that, but we'll try to get to, get it all done. Let me start with election of the chairman and vice chairman. At this time, the county attorney.
I would entertain a motion to open nominations for chair.
Madam Attorney, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Clay Davis as 2024 Chair for Spalding County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, could we open the nominations first, please?
Do we have to?
Yes, you have to open. You don't have to close.
I'd like to make a motion to open the nominations.
All right. There doesn't, that does not require a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Like sign? All right. Now, are there any?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Clay Davis as the Spalding County Board Chairman for the 24 year, fiscal year 24.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, then nominations are closed and we can take the vote for that. You've got a motion and a second. All in favor of electing Clay Davis as chair? Raise your hand, please. Any opposed? Like sign? All right, Mr. Chairman.
For yours.
Thank you. Election to Vice Chair of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners for calendar year 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ryan Bolden as the Vice Chair for the year 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to thank you all for having me as the Vice Chair for, I believe, the last three years. Certainly the last two. It might have been three. Time flies when you're having fun. And I think Ryan's gonna do a great job.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Ryan becoming the Vice Chair, please raise your hand. All those, okay. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Ryan, you want to switch things? You don't have to.
Thank you. Appointment number one appoints Dr. Steve Ledbetter as the County Manager for calendar year 2024.
Motion to appoint Steve Ledbetter as, Dr. Steve Ledbetter as County Manager for 2024.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous.
We agree. Thank you, County Manager.
Appointment of Dr. Ledbetter to be the County Clerk for 2024.
Motion to appoint Dr. Steve Ledbetter as County Clerk for 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Thank you for that, too. Appointment of Ms. Kathy Gibson as the Deputy County Clerk until her retirement.
Mr. Chairman, motion to appoint Kathy Gibson as the Deputy County Clerk until her retirement.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
We'll miss you when you retire.
That's a good news and a bad news for us. Item number four, appoint Ms. Stephanie Wyndham of Beck, Owen, and Murray as the County Attorney.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just like last year, with both four, five, and six, I believe that these need to be RFP'd out for a bid process. Us deciding large contracts like this without a bid process, I believe, is not the way to go. We did do an RFP last year, and in the middle of the RFP process, we came in, withdrew all the RFPs, and just selected somebody. And I believe, at that time, that was illegal to do. I believe that this should be bid out. It's not about, to me, who gets it, but there's a process that we should do with all three of these legal services, just like we did with the state court, public defenders. These should be, these should be an RFP. I wouldn't, I'm against just reappointing without an RFP completely, but I could see appointing if we can have a commitment for an RFP to be put out before the end of the month. And then for the appointment right now to be just for that time until the RFPs come back, to then appoint from whoever the best qualified bidder was from the RFP. Otherwise, it's a no for me.
Mr. Chairman, this is the same conversation that we had last year. Didn't do anything about it then. We should have done this 90 days ago or six months ago. It didn't happen. We're here to handle business tonight.
And I believe that was the plan last year, was to do it 90 days prior, and it didn't get done.
It didn't happen.
And it didn't get done. You're exactly right. And it's disappointing, and we can have that done now, and we can do it by vote.
All right. There's multiple actions in this. One, we need to have a county attorney every day. So we need to appoint, if we're going to, Ms. Wyndham as the County Attorney. The RFP process is a separate process that we need to start to get those done. We need to do it for, I believe, for all the master service agreements. So let's, let's first take an action to finish up and appoint Stephanie Wyndham as the County Attorney.
Again, I, right now, the motion is to do it for the entire year of 2024, not taking any kind of RFP in, and I'm totally against that. This needs to be a temporary appointment until an RFP can be put out there, her firm, and anyone else who wants to bid can bid, and then we can select from the top bidders there. Without that, it's the next three-year no's for me.
We do have a first and a second right now.
Yeah, we're just discussing her motion, which is just to appoint for the year.
Yeah, we're just appointing today. And, and, okay. Does everybody understa, we're appointing her currently, day by day, to do this. We all understand what that is? We're gonna talk about the RFP process.
I think the motion on the floor is that we're reappointing her for the year. That's the motion.
All right, do we have a second?
I think I've already did that.
All right. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Two. Those opposed, three. Motion does not carry.
I make a motion that we appoint Stephanie Wyndham of Beck, Owen, and Murray as the County Attorney with a temporary appointment pending an RFP to begin no later than the end of the month of January, and then for us to come back at the end of that, the close of that RFP, however long it takes, if it's 30, 60, 90 days, whatever it's supposed to be, and then to appoint based on that RFP for the year.
Okay. I have a motion. Ryan, did you say you seconded that motion?
And I'll second it, but like, I want to be clear, this is for every master service.
Well, we gotta do four, and then I'll make the same motion for five and six. Not to surprise anybody, we're just doing four.
Any discussion?
Yes. This is not a master services agreement. This is an agreement that allows us to be charged per job that is completed. I don't have any particular allegiance, but if I were sitting in Beck, Owen, and Murray's seat, I would not be waiting around for us to figure out what we're gonna do. I think it's not good business that we didn't do our job, and now we're trying to hold a firm hostage. I didn't see anybody trying to run around and figure out when we were gonna do a RFP on Liberty Technology for all the computer services, millions of dollars that we pay for computer services for there. I haven't seen anybody trying to do a RFP for all the millions of dollars of services that we have contracted for, whether they were emergency or otherwise during the course of the year. And I truly look at this as a personal attack on, on, on an organization who not only serves us at a cost, but gives us tons of free services, service the Election Department, the Board of Assessors, every office that we have in the county. It is not anybody's, not Beck, Owen, and Murray's fault, it's not Jukes Firm's fault, that we didn't do our job. And it is not fair for us to put the county's business on hold, because guess what? We had all last month and the month before that to talk about this.
And if I also, if I'm not mistaken, and I commend James for doing this, when we did award Jukes Law Firm that, there was, I think there was a reason why we were making that change anyway. I think the change came because there were some questions that we actually had, the current firm, that they were not able to provide us. So we were able to decide at that time we were gonna make the change. This is not the same thing at all. I mean, I think we can all agree, whenever that, Beck, Owen, and Murray, when they, when we need something, a representative, which is Stephanie, to do the job, she does it. And I don't think there's ever been an issue with that. I can see doing this if there's an issue with it, but there's been no issue. So given that, I think this is, this is not something I would suggest that we do, because we may not get the same quality firm in the future.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also. Whoever you get does not know, if it is someone other than Beck, Owen, and Murray, does not know the history of Spalding County. I've been here almost 20 years. That firm has over 100 years of records related to Spalding County. Now, I'm not saying that they should just have it by attrition. This is about performance. If we've not given them any kind of indication that we're not happy with their services, this is clearly a slap in the face. If it were my firm, I would tell us, you know what, y'all going about your business, and you, because I'm not willing to take a one-month contract. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, there's a time and a place for all of that, and this is clearly not the time to start trying to discuss RFPs in the middle of making annual appointments.
We've got retreats and things we've got to go on. We've got things we've got to do in January that the person has to be present anyway. This is just not a good relationship building right now if we're doing this in January.
Mr. Chairman, good. Last year, we did an RFP for this, and in the middle of the RFP, we were given the legal advice that it was legal for us to terminate that RFP early and appoint the person who had given us the legal advice, that it's legal to terminate the RFP, and to appoint. So I don't think this is a surprise to anybody. This is certainly something isn't coming out of left field. We have been telling our staff to do this, and we expected it to get done, but there was so much other stuff happening that this simply didn't get done in time. So that's why we're gonna do it now. That said, we, like I said, we did ask for this RFP. No one should be surprised by this.
But who did we ask for?
I appreciate, I appreciate the time to chat. So this isn't any kind of slap in the face, just like it wasn't for our state court folks. If they'd have been the best qualified person, I'm sure y'all four, because I abstained from that vote, would have chosen them. They, they weren't. And, you know, I, I don't know if anyone else will even bid. This is a transparency issue. That said, I think it's wildly disingenuous to say that we don't bid out our tech support, our phone lines, this sort of stuff. We did have an RFP for that this year, and in fact, Liberty Technology lost and didn't get that in an RFP. So now to come in and say, hey, wait a minute, we didn't do that for Liberty because they're getting millions and we're doing a backdoor deal, that's a lie. And, and that's not true.
It is not a lie.
We did that 100% this year. We had an RFP, and they didn't get it. So here we are.
There was not a vote on an RFP. Do you remember voting on RFP for Liberty Technology?
And we saved $90,000 a year.
Is that, let's let the county manager speak on that. Is that correct?
There was an RFP that was put out for phone services, but not for IT.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And Liberty Technology lost that?
That is, that is correct.
All right. So here we are. The motion has been made to have an RFP for this. This is not a surprise to anyone. We did the same thing last year, even though it was illegally ended early, and so we, we ended in the middle of the RFP process. You know, now we're, we said we're gonna do one this year. Everyone knew we were gonna do one this year. It unfortunately didn't get done, again, because there was a bunch of other stuff to do. Now we're gonna do what we have been saying for over a year, we were gonna do. This is not a slap in the face. This is not a, I can't believe this is happening. This is not a, what? This is such a shock. Over a year, we've been saying this, because we did the exact same thing last year.
It's kind of a shock, James, and I guess only it's a shock is because we never had the conversation that led up. We talked about it a whole year later.
And when we were at the workshop today, you were not here, and there was no indication from the chairman or from the vice chairman that there was a question with you. So that's why I don't understand what happened in the interim from two hours ago, why everybody was okay, we're going ahead with this appointment, and now.
Which is the reason why we have this work session, by the way.
Was there a meeting before the meeting? Because I'm not really understanding this. Call for the question, Mr. Chairman, please. Because there's no sense in us arguing about it, but everybody can see what is happening.
I hope so.
And that's why we had the last meeting recorded.
Transparency is important.
We had the last meeting recorded for a reason.
Okay. Now, we have, we're voting on doing RFP.
No, that's not what we're voting on tonight. We're, this is the appointment.
Temporary appointment pending an RFP that will happen before the end of the month.
Okay, Stephanie, my question is, do we have to legally say that this is a temporary appointment? Because it's never been a temporary appointment, except for last year, we asked your firm, would you be willing work month to month until the RFP went out? So, so help me understand the legalities of this before.
Traditionally, it's an annual appointment. I don't believe there's anything in the ordinance that, I mean.
That allows us to make a temporary appointment?
We have a verbal contract. You have a verbal contract with us. We don't have a master services agreement. I don't believe Galloway and Lindell has a master services agreement with Spalding County either. So it would be, I mean, it would be something that you could end at any time, and so, so could we.
Or you could end at any time.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Three. All those opposed, like sign. Two. Motion carries. Appointment of the county zoning attorney, Newton Galloway of Galloway and Lindell.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Newton Galloway, Newton Galloway, sorry, of Galloway and Lindell for the temporary appointment pending an RFP to begin no later than the end of the month of January 2024.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Again, in no way is this an attack on them at all. This, like, like our legal counsel just said, we have a verbal contract with lawyers. Like, this, this exceeds the amount that we should have a verbal contract. This is something that we should have much more formal arrangement with, and it should be done in a much more transparent process.
I think we do a lot of assuming here. We're doing, we're doing a lot of assuming that within the 30 days, like Gwen was saying, Commissioner Flowers was saying, that they're around the 30 days.
If you couldn't get it done in a year, I wanted to stand around and see you get it done in 30 days. Also, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the new Vice Chairman, where he stands on this.
Well, when we got to number six earlier, when we had our little workshop, that's when I got to thinking, everything needs to be RFP'd out. I mean, just to be fair, and I'm, I'm for everything. I mean, Liberty Technologies, I mean, down to everything. It just shows transparency. And if y'all know, last year, I voted with y'all. I love Stephanie. I have no complaints against Stephanie. I'm just trying to do the transparency thing.
Okay, and I appreciate you sharing that. That's, I just, I just want to hear from you.
And that's where, and that's where I come, come to the conclusion, when we got to number six a while ago, we were talking about tabling it. I'm like, just, just, just bid them all out, every one of them.
So, yeah, but understanding that we, we necessarily don't have an automatic contract for, if tomorrow we call Beck, Owen, and Murray and need them to do something, they're not contracted with us. Just as long as everyone understands that.
They weren't before. It's a verbal contract.
It's terrible exposure for this county, is what it is.
It doesn't change the exposure we've had traditionally for the last 30 years either, because we had a verbal contract, and at any moment, they could have said, no.
We're breaking the contract, but we're basically not.
No, but we're not. We're, right now, we have a verbal contract with them, which means at any point going forward, at any point in the past, they could have, at their discretion, walked away. They could have done that. At any point, we could have walked away. We had a verbal contract.
But we're walking away from this.
We're asking now for a written contract via an RFP. We're saying, we're going to continue as is for the month until we can actually codify this via our, via RFPs and make this an official agreement. Instead of verbal contracts, yeah, it's always been, we'll just keep going. We're making this actual contracts, actual verbal, not verbal, but actually written down, and actual transparency, so that, just like we do with all the other contracts. This isn't a reflection of anybody's personality. It's the same thing when we did it with the, the phone services with Liberty. Yes, absolutely, they should be totally transparent, they should be totally out, everyone should have the, an equal access to this. To say that I'm doing this because I dislike any of my fellow members of the bar is totally erroneous. This is 100% for transparency's sake. And, and, and Newton's a friend of mine, like, and yet I'm saying, hey, this is a temporary appointment until you can bid and follow the procedure like we should have been using for 30 years. I'm sorry that 30 years ago, I wasn't here, but we should have been doing this all along. There are people on the board that have been here a lot longer than me, that have always used it like this. I'm sorry that that's a terrible way of doing business, verbal contracts with lawyers. She just said, hey, you can, you, we can back out. Y'all can back out. And they could all last year. They could all the year before that. They could all the year before that. They could all the year before that.
Doesn't that say something about the firm that doesn't do that?
But, and it's going to say a lot about the firm over the next month, when they also don't do it then. No one expects, they don't expect to not get this contract. They're going to bid, it's going to be abnormal.
You, you don't know what they expect. That's what I'm saying. Just because you're an attorney, you don't know what that firm is talking about. And to correct you, when Stephanie or Beck Owen and Murray, when Jim Fortune was here, we had a contract with them that said, we paid you X amount of dollars per year. And the other board members, and myself included, decided that we should only be charged for what it is that you do for us. So we are charged for whatever services that she does, just, we're billed for the county, you're billed for the fire department, you're billed for every department. So for me, that was a change. It was clearly a change from us saying, you're going to get $450,000 a year for legal services, because I questioned that. So I want to correct you, that's not the way it had always been. And so if you had done your homework, you would know that this was the resulting contract that we had for them to bill us and pay us. And that contract, and maybe Kathy can find it, talked about how much it was per hour that they charged us when they did services to us. So if you, you don't know what you're talking about about 30 years ago, don't judge people when you don't know what you're talking about.
What does the new contract say? Oh, wait, it's oral. That's right.
We don't have an oral contract.
She just said...
We do not have an oral contract. If there is no written paper, there is no contract.
My, my contract is an oral contract with the county. You ask her, that was her response to your question. I'm, I'm sorry that I haven't done my homework.
Because she didn't get appointed. No, you surely haven't.
So basically, we wasted two hours, excuse me, we wasted two hours this morning having this work session.
Yeah.
Is what we've done.
Yeah.
You've wasted...
So, Mr. Chairman, just call for the question, because I think we've all made it clear where this looks like it's going and what this is about.
And I won't be attending another one.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three. All those opposed, two. Motion carries. Item number six, consider a master service agreement with the county human resources attorney, John Lowry of Mosul, Finsland, and Loggins LLP.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, was that for number five that we just voted, or was that for...
It was number five, it was.
Okay.
Yeah, that was five. Do I have a motion?
Motion to temporarily appoint the master service agreement for the county human resources attorney to John Lowry of Mosley, Finlinson, and Loggins LLP, pending an RFP to go out for the same before the end of the month of January.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, and, you know, as I spoke about this earlier today, and Commissioner Denton, myself, being involved with, you know, this firm, I, I think this, this is just cause of why this needed to be bid out, because I felt like that we did not get what we needed to at the time we finally used, used them in this contract. I think that's the whole process here. When you're unhappy about a service that's provided, that gives others an opportunity to bid for that. When you're, when you're pleased with the service that you're getting, I think that it's, it's, to me, it's crucial that you keep the relationship and the services that you have, because you realize the benefits that we've gained from this. So this is an example of why it should be, it should be bid out, not the others, just to be clear.
I, I would...
And we had that conversation earlier today.
I will say, I was also pretty disappointed with their...
This is the reason why we, this is the reason why we do this.
Lack of work on this one. No, I, I agree with that on this one.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, unanimous carries. All right. Appointments by citizens, consider appointment to the Board of Appeals and... Let me explain to everybody so that everybody understands how this is done. We have a book that nominations are taken and put into. They are voted on chronologically by the time when they are received by the county clerk. Then we talk through them. We vote on each person chronologically. The first person to get three votes is in, and then we go to the next person. It may be that we go through four or five people before we get one person that has three votes to be able to do it. So, all right, and the county manager will read the name off, and we will vote on this. And we're doing the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. And this is a pretty thick book, so it takes a second to get to the right place and get it all ready to go. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, the first name in the Board of Appeals and Adjustments is Mr. James Robert Bob Byer.
All right.
How many names are in the book, Mr. Chairman?
One, two, two.
There are two appointments. Shall we take them together?
Goodbye me.
The second name in the book is Victor Epps.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Do we have to have a motion or...
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Bob Byers and Mr. Epps, Bill Epps, to the Board of Appeals and Adjustments on safe building abatements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
We don't need to do it individually. We can do it both at the same time, right, Stephanie?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. Item number two, consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Area Transportation Committee to succeed Jerry McNeely in one-year term ending December 2021. To succeed, I'm just going to put these all together.
You can take all of these together as well.
Okay, to succeed Frank Harris, who wants to continue for a one-year appointment ending December 31st, 2024.
Jerry wants to continue as well, right?
That is two appointments. That's Jerry McNeely and Frank Harris, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, he's very much.
Yeah, both of those. And then, let's just vote those two first, and then we'll talk about a whole bunch of other people.
May, may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman, before we move forward? Under Mr. Frank Harris's name, there is a, an O for other than city or county. So what, what's really going on with that? Because I thought Frank Harris was a county appointee.
Well, that's my fault, because I found out last year that Frank was our appointment. I thought up until that time, he was appointed by the chamber.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure after I saw the O on there.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have a motion to approve both...
Motion to reappointment.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. The following serve as representatives of this committee in their individual roles and require Board of Commissioner affirmation or of reappointment for a one-year term ending 12/31/24. I will read the names of, and the agencies they represent on the committee, then ask for a motion from all of the individuals to be reappointed. Harlan Smith, GDOT planner, Bruce Ballard, Griffin Spalding School Board, Tommy Kennedy, transportation planner for Three Rivers Regional Commission, Jeffrey Dean, Assistant Provost and Director of UGA Campus, David Lucky, Executive Director for the Development Authority, Cindy Jones, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Harvey Booker, Development Authority. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, Mr. Chairman, another question.
Yes, please.
Harvey Booker is listed as an other, and so are all the other names that we listed. I, I understand you said we needed to affirm these, but if these committees, I mean, Harlan Smith is going to be there because he's GDOT, or whoever it is that's from GDOT. So that, that necessarily won't be him. Bruce Ballard, or whoever's from the school system. Tom McKennedy's Three Rivers, he's going to be it, just because he's a transportation guy. I'm not sure who Jeffrey Dean is, but David is on there by virtue of the fact that he's a development, economic development guy, and Cindy by virtue of the fact that she's a chairman, chamber. Since that is not our actual appointment, I think that we shouldn't...
But we have every year, that's why they're on there this year. Every year, we appoint them to...
I think it's more of an affirmation than less of an appointment. Because you're right, it's not really our appointment to make. It's sort of like, we have to approve the speed limits or whatever. Like, if we say no, it doesn't change it. You know what I'm saying? Like, I think it's one of those that we have to...
If we affirm it, and they, that organ, if the school board changes and it's not Bruce, it's Adam Pugh or whoever, do we come back and reaffirm him?
Bruce will send on Harris on his, on his behalf to some of the meetings, but it's still a school board representative.
But I think what she's saying is, we're, we're not actually appointing any of these people. We don't control who's in that seat in any of these seats, right?
And it doesn't really matter if we affirm or not, because they can put whoever they want to in, as long as they have a representative. So I'm just trying to get to a place where we don't go through this whole 10 list of things that we don't have any control over whatsoever. So not to cut you off, but I'm just saying, out of that list, it really looks like, and I'm not sure why Harvey Booker is on there unless he's on the Joint Development Authority.
He's on the, he's the Transportation Committee Chair for the Development Authority.
Okay, so the only person that's on here is Sheriff Dix. Looks like, I don't know, they have James's name, Ryan's name.
Well, that's just the committee members.
Right.
These are the heads of the committee. Or, or it's on C.
These are, these are citizens' appointments and not staff or designated.
Right. So, so I'm just simply saying...
You're right. Voting or not voting on these doesn't change it. So I agree, we shouldn't vote on stuff that...
We don't have any jurisdiction.
We've traditionally kind of affirmed the, but like, vote or no vote, we could put other people's names in, it's not going to make a difference. Like, they're not, it's not going to be those people, it's going to be these people, no matter what we do.
If you guys are just all wanting to do that, I'm just saying, I'm trying not to do...
We're just making a blanket statement that we just affirm them all. Can we just say that and do that? And just be, we affirming all of them.
Yeah. What's the, consensus of the board says, these people are great.
All right.
We're good with that?
Yes.
Motion to affirm?
No, it's just a consensus, we like these people.
Okay, yeah, because I'm...
In next year, we will take these off, because we had the same questions, and this has been ongoing for a considerable...
Yeah, and I, and Kathy, I get it, we've been doing it, but, you know, that just adds another level of...
Well, and there's the...
It's the 78 GDOT stuff they make us vote on that we have no vote on.
I mean, literally, I send these people letters, and they call me and say, yes, I want to stay on the committee. That's why they get put on the list.
Okay.
I, I understand, I get...
Let's go to know they want to do it.
Oh, forget it, you ain't going to be here next year, but you call us next year and tell us what to do.
All right, let's go on. Item number three, consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding County Development Authority to succeed Tom Gardner for a three-year term ending 12/31/26. Mr. Gardner does not want to seek reappointment.
Who's in the book?
Should be Howard. So Robert Parker is in the book. He is a reappointment.
Yes, he's next.
William Wilson is in the book and signed.
Okay, so let's take...
Howard Ayers not in the book?
No.
The name Howard Ayers isn't in the book? I submitted his name.
Did you sign, do you remember signing it, James?
I put his name on for this and for...
We want, while we're, while we're looking at that one, reappoint Robert Parker.
Motion to appoint Robert Parker for a three-year term ending 12/31/26 to the Development Authority.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, unanimous. Thank you.
James, he is in the book, but it's not signed. Do you want to sign that?
We need to sign your parts and records too.
Okay. Now, let's go to the replacement for Tom Gardner.
There we go.
First one in the book.
Who's the first one in the book for?
Yeah, what were the, what were the dates?
That would be William Wilson.
The first one in the book is 12/7, William Wilson, and the second in the book is Howard Ayers at 12/15.
All right. Do I have, we're voting on William Wilson first. All those in favor of William Wilson, raise your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. Wilson, William Wilson will be going on to the Development Authority. Item number four, consider appointment to the Griffin Spalding Hospital Authority to succeed Catherine Lindgren for a four-year term ending December 31st, 2027.
What's in the book?
The first...
Just so everybody knows, the county manager is having to keep track of notes on what we're voting on and who's doing it and things like that, and trying to keep track of the book at the same time. A little bit more complicated than just flipping through a book, so I appreciate everybody's understanding.
The first one in the book is Will, William D. Thorpe Jr., and that's 10/16/2023. And the second one in the book is Cynthia Geider, and that one was today.
And is there any, is that it? No more to sign?
There are. Sorry, Judy Parker, 12/11/23.
All right.
The first one, I'm sorry, read them again.
The first one, I'm sorry, read them again.
Will Thorpe, 10/16/23, Judy Parker, 12/11, and Cynthia Geider today.
Who put, who put Mr. Thorpe in?
Uh, it looks like Clay.
I did.
I did. This guy is, he's been on hospital authorities before, outside the state, and I thought he would be advantageous to us to get somebody outside, who's new to us, but outside the, seen another hospital authority work.
If I am not mistaken, Mr. Thorpe was not put in the book and signed when I put... Maybe Mr. Thorpe was the only one in the book, okay.
All right.
Thorpe is the first one, right?
Thorpe is the first one, yes, sir.
All right, all those in favor, all those in favor of Thorpe, raise your hand. Okay, hold it, do you have a question?
Yes, would you, did you read some of his information on what was on his form?
Yes. Bachelor's Degree in Human Resources, or sorry, Human Services, Active Board Member of various human service organizations for the past 30 years, including WCEMA, St. Lutz, Cromwell Hospital, Allant Incorporated Foundation Chair, Independent Living Incorporation Board Chair, and Habitat for Humanity. Upon retirement, he established the Thorpe Charitable Foundation. He's an active member of United Way of Spalding County, Eastern Orange County Independent Living Services. And, let's see, throughout his life, he has always had a goal to give back to the community and address the needs of the underserved.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of Mr. Thorpe, raise your hand. All right, two, next.
Judy Parker?
All right, all those in favor of Judy Parker?
Who's?
She used to be the head, she used to be the Communications Director for the school system, in case you don't remember who she is.
Does there any way we can read the information on all of them?
Yeah.
Please forgive me. Ms. Judy Parker, Retired Public Relations Strategist, MBA in Marketing and Management, came to Georgia to set up the new city of Sandy Springs. She has a varied background and experience, and, let's see, her resume indicates that she was with the Griffins Spalding County School System, Director of Media and Communications for Sandy Springs, Marketing Communications Consultant, and Director of School Communication Relationships, sorry, relation, Community Relations in Tacoma, Washington. She has an MBA in Marketing from the university, from City University in Bellevue, Washington.
And the third one?
Ms. Cynthia Geider, Bachelor of Science in Nursing, Healthcare Professional for 35 Years in South Carolina.
No, Spalding County.
Sorry, please forgive me. Yes, she looks like Spald, South Carolina. Lived and worked in Spalding County her entire life. Her indication here is healthcare professional.
Okay, we've done one. We have not voted on Judy Parker, I don't believe. All right, all those in favor of Judy Parker, please raise your hand. Two, all, all right.
The next one is...
Cynthia Geider.
Cynthia Geider. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Three, three wins. All right. Item number five. Consider appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board to succeed Connie Klopstein for a three-year term ending 12/31/2026. This is a reappointment for her. She used to work there, in both sides of the house, in case you want to know, and has been doing a good job.
Is there someone else in the book?
Actually, yes. Mr. Thorpe had indicated either the Hospital Authority or McIntosh Trail, and his nomination form is the first one in the book from 10/16, and Ms. Connie's is in the book from 11/6.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Thorpe, all those in favor of Mr. Thorpe, raise your hand. One, all right. Connie Klopstein, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Four. I want to make sure the board understands, you can vote for multiple people as you go through. You know, this is, if you didn't vote for one, you can still vote for the, all right. Item number six. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Board of Health to succeed Cynthia Tidwell for a six-year term to expire December 31, 2029. Mrs. Tidwell, Ms. Tidwell would like to be reappointed. She was appointed on a short-term, and now is reappointing, and she used to be the nurse out there. All right.
Director of Nursing at the Spalding County Health Department. It's not just nurse.
I'm sorry. Thank you, their nurse. All those in favor of Ms. Tidwell, please raise your hand. Five, thank you. Item number B, 6B, to succeed Keith Simmons as the School Superintendent or Designee on this board. Dr. Simmons would like to be reappointed.
But that's...
By positions.
This is by position.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we are nodding our head in consensus?
Consensus.
Okay, we're making our heads shake.
All right. Thank you, yes.
I don't think we vote on that one.
All right. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Ethics Review Panel. Four, I will read the individuals for each district. If you agree with the individuals listed on the panel for your district, please express your agreement after your district is read. District one, Miriam Eberhart, Robert Latimer...
Latimer.
Latimer, thank you. Jesse Maddox.
Yes, sir.
Item number, District two, Brian Seddler, Eva Berlin-Savester, and Catherine Savester.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number three, Zachary Holmes, Tiangela Booker, Reginald Watts.
Yes.
Item four...
Mr. Chairman, that's actually, should be Tangela Williams, not Tangela Booker.
Tangela Booker Williams, yes.
It's just Williams.
Okay, thank you. You still...
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. District four, Level Camp, Jackie Robinson, Rita Mace. Okay, thank you.
Is that Robinson or Robertson? I thought it was Robinson.
Robertson, that's my...
It's Robertson.
Okay.
That's me, sorry. District five, Robert Byer, Mike Davis, Deb Pecone, which is, I agree with.
Okay, is that, that's all?
Do we need to accept that, or it's a district appointment, so we're good?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Consider appointments to the Spalding County Park and Rec Advisory Commission. This is, both of them are District two appointments. Taylor Dutton for a two-year to reappoint, to expire December 31, 2025.
Yes. And Howard Ayers, but I think I have to sign his. A-Y-R-E-S, yeah.
These are post-appointments for...
Leisure services.
Commissioner Dutton. All right. Item number nine. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Personnel Appeals Board to succeed James Campbell for a three-year term to expire on December 31, 2026.
Mr. Chairman, there are, how many names are in the book?
Just a second.
I know we have one position that, that's, well, that wasn't filled, so I was just trying to figure out how many people maybe.
There are three names in the book.
So, we're still going to be missing. Are those three names, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Washington, and Mr. Patterson?
It's Stanley Washington, Louis Patterson, and Judy Battle.
Okay. And who signed Ms. Battle's paper?
Actually, no one.
Okay.
Who was supposed to?
Does anybody know who that is?
That doesn't count then.
Okay, so, we only really have two appointments we can make now. So, I would like to make a motion to reappoint for three-year terms to the Spalding County Personnel Appeals Board, Mr. James Campbell and Mr. Stanley Washington for three-year terms.
Louis Patterson.
Louis.
Oh, it's Louis and Stanley, okay, I take that back. Resent my motion. I would like to make a motion to appoint Stanley Washington and Mr. Louis Patterson for three-year terms to expire on December 31, 2026, for the Spalding County Personnel Appeals Board.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries.
One question before we go forward.
Come on, two more spots.
Right, yeah. We need to find two people between us to serve on that board, okay. Personnel Appeals Board, just in case anybody's out there listening, there's two spots.
So, that you understand what the Personnel Appeals Board does specifically, if there is a fight inside the county on somebody who has been terminated, we have an appeals board that they sit down, and they go through, and the appeals board then makes a recommendation. So, if you're terminated by county, and you want to appeal it, you appeal it to the appeals board, and it does, it meets very infrequently. I don't think it's met in the last couple of years, for sure, but when it meets, it really is pretty critical to the county.
All right, so, we're still looking for two people. Item number 10. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Library Board of Trusts to succeed. I'm going to read the names. Now, these are reappointments. Virginia Church to a four-year term, Kay Weidman to a four-year term, Barbara Jo Cook to a four-year term, Tiangela Booker-Williams to a four-year term, and Nancy...
Nancy Morris does not want to be reappointed.
Excuse me, those first four. Do we have a motion to approve those first four?
Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, question, so, did anybody else put their name in the book for that?
They did. Eddie Michael Greenwald.
Mike Greenwald, I put him in there, from Sun City Position.
I would like to make a motion to approve Mr. Greenwald, to appoint him to the Library Board.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, thank you.
Greenwald.
Mike Greenwald, okay. Item number 11. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities to succeed Clay Davis as the Community Representative on this authority for a six-year term ending December 31, 2029.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Clay Davis as the Sun City Representative to the Spalding County Sewer and Water Facilities Authority.
I have a motion and a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, thank you all. Reappointment to succeed Jeff Brandon for a six-year term ending December 31, 2029. He wants to continue on. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jeff Brandon for a six-year term ending in December 31, 2029, for the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities Authority.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Next is to succeed Cheryl Matlock, who has finished her six-year term for, and will be for December 31, 2029. She does not want to continue on.
Who's in the book?
Mr. Chairman, we have two names in the book. Cal Oxford, November 14, 2023, and Pamela Sutton, 12/3, 2023.
Do I have a motion to accept Cal Oxford to the Water Authority?
I'll make a motion to accept Cal Oxford to the Water Authority.
Do I have a second?
Yep, I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Do we get any discussion?
Oh, Scott, I'm sorry, yes, no, discussion?
We were in a group, we were in a group.
So, I just want to say, having sat on the Water Authority for this multitude of years, I did serve on this board with Mr. Oxford. If anyone, and I shared this information, had cared to look, they could have looked at the Water Authority's previous histories and seen that gentleman's performance on that board. Less, as far as I'm concerned, less than desirable. Part of, one of the reasons why we're in the situation we're in right now in the Water Authority is because that board was comprised of people who did not want to do anything. So, I, you know, you do your homework, you get what you get.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor of Cal Oxford, please raise your hand. Three, all opposed, doesn't matter, thank you. Item number 12. Consider appointment to the Two Rivers R-C-and-D Council to succeed Danny Meadows as the alternate member to this council for a one-year term ending December 31, 2024. Mr. Meadows has expressed his desire to be reappointed. Is there anybody in the book for this?
Danny Meadows is the only one in the book.
All right, do I have a motion to reappoint Danny Meadows to the Two Rivers R-C-and-D Council? Just so you know, he used to be the chairman of the R-C-and-D Council.
Motion to read for him, Mr. Meadows.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. It says here that Danny Meadows is to succeed him as an alternate member of this council for a one-year term.
James is the member. James doesn't make it in this chair.
Yeah, it has to be one of us, so then we can get like an alternate.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, unanimous. Item 13. Consider appointment to the Griffins Spalding Land Bank Authority to succeed Pansy Copeland for her unexpired term scheduled to end December 31, 2024.
Dr. Ledbetter?
Please forgive me.
Take your time.
Cora Flowers is in the book at 12/7/2023, and Pansy Copeland is not signed.
Okay. I have, do I have a motion to accept Cora?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Cora Flowers to the Griffins Spalding Land Bank Authority as a county representative.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Appointments.
She's going to be wrecking that.
Yeah, she's going to be wrecking that.
She's going to be, excuse me, I didn't mean to say. Consider appointment, she's a big brain. She really and truly is. All right. Consider appointment to the Griffins Spalding Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. I just...
Do I, I want to say something?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rita Johnson, thank you. And the second person to the board, the Chamber of Commerce.
Do we have to vote on DeAndre, or is that an appointment? I mean, is that a chairman?
These are just chairman appointments.
Okay, okay.
Okay. DeAndre?
Okay, I'm looking for head nods from people as we go through.
He's also one of our ambassadors, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly right. All right. Consider appointment to the Griffin Downtown Council. Commissioner Dutton, thank you. Consider appointment to the Griffin Main Street. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Consider appointment to the Griffins Spalding Area Transportation Committee. Commissioner Bolden?
If anybody else would be available to do that, because that one's very hard to make at 1:30 on a Wednesday.
Now, let's, let's...
And Gwen's already in there.
Yeah, I didn't realize that I was on that, but, yeah, I do know now. But I did put, there is someone in the book that I put in the book today as a chairman's pick, should you decide that you wanted to do that. Mr. Dave Johnson, I can't remember it, just, can you read his?
Okay, hold it, let's just, all right. How many positions do we...
He's written everything he does.
Gwen, are you going to continue on as...
As your designee?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Now that I know that I'm supposed to be doing it. Sorry.
Inside joke, because she attends every time. She didn't know she was the primary to be able to do that, so that's the inside joke with us, so everybody understands. Okay.
We appreciate your...
We only have one position?
No, sir. If Ryan is asking for some relief for his time during that meeting, then you would have be afforded an additional appointment here.
Now, let's talk for a second. I know David Johnson's a good guy, okay. Second part is, the person I usually have there is TJ, TJ Imberger. He attends the...
He is, he's down here.
Okay, excuse me. All right.
TJ's going to be there for Charles Reese. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I have David Johnson in the book. All those in favor, do I have a motion?
Motion to appoint Mr....
Wait, wait.
I just appoint, yeah.
I think you just appoint.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep, okay, thank you.
He's asking for one, I was like, wait a minute.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so, I'm appointing David Johnson as our representative to the GSAP-C. All right, let me see where I am, okay.
Sheriff Dix.
To appoint, I'm appointing Sheriff Dix as the Sheriff's Department for a one-year term. I'm appointing Dr. Ledbetter for a one-year term. I am appointing...
Not deputy, but...
Deputy Chief.
Glenn Polk.
I am?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm appointing Chief Glenn Polk for the Spalding County Fire Department for the one-year term. And for the second part, to succeed Charles Reese, I'm appointing TJ Imberger to the committee for public, to represent Public Works and Road Department. I'm appointing Commissioner Dutton to the Spalding County Development Authority. Okay, thank you. To the Griffins Spalding Hospital Authority, I'm appointing myself. McIntosh Trail Community Service Board, I'm appointing myself. Appointment, I am appointing myself to the Spalding County Board of Health on the Spalding[1783.33] to the Spalding County Board of Health on the Spalding County Collaborative Authority and Families, Children Incorporated. We will, I'm appointing Nicole McCray to represent the Sheriff's Department. Let's see here now. And to succeed Rita, there should be one, one more in the book. I'm appointing.
Don Taylor.
Don Taylor as my representative to the collaborative. Consider appointment to the Spalding County Parks and Rec Advisory. Gwen, please continue on with that. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, it would be my pleasure.
Consider appointment to the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities. Gwen, if you would continue to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Consider appointment to the Three Rivers Regional Commission Board of Directors to fill the chairman or designate position. Commissioner Flowers, if you'd continue to do that?
Yes, sir, unless, of course, Ryan wants something extra to do.
No, I'm good right now.
Okay, he said he's good. He said he's good.
Consider appointment to the Two Rivers R.C. and D. Commissioner Dutton, and you have an alternate, we've done earlier. Okay. Consider appointment to the West Central Workforce Investment Board. This, I will be that person. Consider reappointment of Glenn Polk as the Emergency Management Director for Spalding County. He will hold this position, he's held this position since 2018, so I will appoint him.
And done phenomenal at it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Item 16, appoint two commissioners to the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities Authority Sewer Utility Steering Committee. These two individuals will play a pivotal role in establishing the sewer utility. That will be Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor and Commissioner Brian Bolden. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a big step on what we're trying to do with stakeholders. All right. At this time, item number eight, citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual commissioners or to the audience. Personal disagreement with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chairman, we have two people signed up for this evening. Mr. Roy McLean, if you would, please come forward.
You're the person go first, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Mike Middlebrooks, if you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Mike Middlebrooks, 1108 Maple Drive. First, I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. At the beginning of the meeting, when the discussion came up about the legal representation of the county and whatnot, I can appreciate the fact that the requests have been put out for RFPs for anything, in my opinion, under, when it involves contract, verbal doesn't get it done in the government. It needs to be on paper. My other, my main idea here tonight is, and I know the jobs are, there's two jobs posted on Spalding County's website, but I don't know what the current status is of any standing positions. Code enforcement. I don't know if we have a code enforcement officer currently, or if we're seeking one. If we have one, I would tell you that they're not responding to complaints from citizens around the county in different areas. If they respond at all, and from what I'm told, they're not getting responses, nothing's being done on some, some pretty bad issues, especially with properties that are not being maintained and devaluing the over-assessed properties next door. I would just ask that if we have a code enforcement officer on staff now, that we push them to really, to get after it and do what they're supposed to do. If we don't, let's, let's do all we can to get somebody out in the field to, to push for the codes, because we've got some pretty nappy-looking places. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask the manager to please update, allow him to update him on the status of code enforcement? In fact, do we have someone, or do we?
We have, we are actively seeking a code enforcement officer. We currently do not have a code enforcement officer in the county.
Okay. So, yeah, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. McLean?
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight briefly. I come at, I'm, excuse me. I come at the direction of the Spalding County Board of Elections and Registrations as the point of contact, asking that the Board of Commissioners direct 8,000 to be moved from insurance or other appropriate line item into pay and allowances or the appropriate line item. Such an action will allow the Board of Elections and Registration to resolve financial issues while the county conducts a study of county salaries. If there were any questions, I would be happy to answer those, but I understand that that's not your prerogative to do. So, that's all I have. Thank you. And we would ask you, if you decide to do this, to do it immediately.
We gotta come out of the.
I don't have anything.
Come out, so this account. No, it's not. We didn't, we didn't.
A motion, we're gonna have a motion a little later on about fire trucks, and we'll pick up, we can pick up this one at the same time. Just give us a little time, we'll get that.
I'm here too.
Yes. All right. Anybody else on that?
No, sir.
That's what I said. We just forgot.
Yes, yes. Item number nine, consider approval of the minutes of the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' work session and regular meeting on December 4, 2023. Last motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda and.
Say it again?
We should amend the agenda.
Just read them all, right?
It's kinda weird, too.
You wanna do it now?
A minute right before you do them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include two new items under new business. One, a discussion, as we talked about in the work session, about fire trucks. We've had some emergencies with the fire trucks. That would be number five under new business, and then a number six with new business to discuss the request from the Board of Elections for them to be able to shift some of their internal funding from one line item from their budget to another. That'd be a new five and then a new six.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. Item 10, consent agenda. I will read the items on the consent agenda, and the board can vote on these items as a whole, or should they, should there be a need to discuss any of the items individually? The board will vote on items to be approved and then discuss the items in questions prior to a vote on the remaining items. Item number one, consider a second reading, an ordinance prohibiting overnight parking in parks. Item two, consider resolution to stagger the items, the terms, excuse me, for the members of the Board of Assessors. Item three, consider approval of the street-like districts for Grayson Park. Item four, consider RFP number 2025-2028-A to the Three Rivers Agency on Aging for Senior Nutrition Program Services.
That last one's for Meals on Wheels?
Uh, area aging for sen, yes, senior nutrition. Mr. Chairman, I would like to, before we decide how we're gonna do this, I have a question on item number one in consent agenda. Is that, shouldn't that be in Spalding County parks? Because the city of Griffin has several pocket parks that have parking lots, and if somebody wants to park overnight in one of them?
We don't control it. Yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just the second reading on the one that we did in December.
Okay, I was, you know, it just says parking in parks. It doesn't say it's our parks.
The.
It is, yes.
Our ordinance says that.
So, in that case, I would like for us to consider items one, three, and four in the consent agenda and an explanation for item two.
All right.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items one, three, and four as consent agenda items.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. All right. Item number two.
Just an explanation of what, you know.
For some reason, the terms of this three-member board, which should always have been staggered, became unstaggered, so we're left with two members being appointed at the same time. And if something were to happen, then there would be no, there could be no quorum of the Board of Assessors. Therefore, the legislation, which allows you to set terms from between three and six years and stagger those terms by resolution, the solution to the non-staggering issue was to pass a resolution to stagger those terms. So, the, the member that is not up for reappointment, his term expires December 31 of 2026, and I've set them out in the resolution as post. Kathy, could you show the resolution again, please? So, the, the position currently filled by Johnny McDaniel is post one. The seat filled by Brad, vacated by Brad Wideman is post two, and by Dick Morrow is post three. I ask that the, the resolution would allow the post-two seat to be a four-year term and the post-three seat to be a five-year term, and after that, they would all be six-year terms, and they would all be staggered.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to stagger terms for the members of the Board of Assessors.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. That gets us back to where we're trying to go. All right. Old business. Lift from the table and appoint members to the Spalding County Board of Tax Assessors. Consider expiring, consider expiring terms of Dick Morrow and Thomas Brad Wideman. Both these gentlemen have expressed their desire to remain on the board. New appointments are for six, six-year terms. We wrote that in there in case the ordinance did not pass, but the new appointments will be six years after the.
After the stagger.
The three, two, and five-year.
Four and five.
Four and five, excuse me. All right.
Motion to lift, item number one, an old business from the table.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All those, any, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Motion is lifted. All right, Dr. Ledbetter? We're at the Tax Assessor Board.
So, the first one in the book is Mr. Joe Bailey.
Okay. Joe Bailey, all those in favor, we're back to the three votes again. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four. All opposed? One. All right.
The second one in the book is Mr. Dick Morrow.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Two. All those, all those opposed, Ms. Gwen, did you?
I raised my hand.
For, yes, okay. All, two. All right, next.
Mr. Brad Wideman?
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Two. Next.
Byron Pierce?
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four.
Five.
Five, excuse me. Five. Item number 12, consider approval of a request from Spalding, Griffin-Spalding Hospital Authority to provide funding for the following projects. Spalding County Board of Health, flu shots, $22,000. Spalding County Senior Nutrition Program, Meals on Wheels, $54,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a request from the Griffin-Spalding Hospital Authority to provide funding for the health departments for flu shots this year and to the senior nutrition program for Meals on Wheels in the amount of $54,000.
I have a motion and a second.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. So, everybody remembers, the hospital authority gets the funding, and both the city and the county must approve. Consider request from the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities Authority to remove Spalding County as trustee on the trust indentured with Minerva Spring Lake LP and appoint the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facilities Authority as the trustee on the trust indenture. So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you. Item number three, consider a moratorium for building permits and rezoning within the former Sunnyside city limits. So, everybody understands, Sunnyside had their charter requested and had their charter ended, so they are no longer a municipality and on December 31st of 2023. So, the county now has two cities, Griffin and Archer Hill. And that requires us to do a lot of issues with the business that they had of their debt or not debt, the, how we do zoning for them and everything else. So, the issue is really about taking a moratorium to say, hold it, let's grab hold of what we've got to be able to do here. Is that not correct? All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What is the time limit on the moratorium?
I believe it's 90 days.
Do we really feel like we're gonna be able to get what we need to get done in 90 days?
We do. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, he's not sitting there now. I'm pointing where he normally sits.
Okay.
It concludes April 30th, 2024, at 11:59, unless further extended. That's how the moratorium is written. In fact, section seven, duration, moratorium period shall commence beginning Tuesday, January 9th at 12:00 a.m. and shall conclude Tuesday, April 30, 2024, at 11:59, unless further extended by the board. We do have some, some good indications based on the conversation I had with Newton Galloway, who is supporting and helping this cause.
So, my only concern with that is that we do not have a planning development.
That's correct.
At this time, to be able to bring the expertise that we need in-house. And I would just hate for us to get at 90 days. And I think under normal circumstances, which we haven't been normal in like three years, that might be possible. But I, you know, I don't want to come back in 90 days.
And worst-case scenario, big, big picture here, if things, worst-case, if it doesn't work out with Newton Galloway, we bring somebody, that we're gonna, that person has to be up to speed with everything we've done.
Yeah.
So, just be mindful of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's my only concern, is trying to push us up against a deadline.
Make sure we all know that.
That we're not real sure.
Do we want to extend that right now?
I'm thinking 120 days at least. I feel, would feel more comfortable with adding that extra 30 days. I mean, if they haven't done it in 90, fine. But if they don't, we don't have to come back to us and ask us to extend it another 90 days or 30 days. Just give them that time. If they're finished early, bring it back. But that, I think that will, if we get a planning, a planning and development person that. But, um, that, that, I think that will, if we get a planning, a planning and development person in the interim, that will help. But between Newton, um, Eva, Steve, maybe, maybe we can get it together.
The good part about it is Newton was the city's.
Right, for them, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing for.
So I would just like to ask if we would change that to a hundred and twenty days.
And changing the date?
Okay, did anybody make a motion already?
No ma'am.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to approve the moratorium for building permits and rezonings within former Sunnyside city limits, beginning at midnight tonight and ending a hundred and twenty days from today.
That would be Friday, May thirty-first at midnight.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I am conflicted. I have people, both friends and family, who want to put in permits for this.
Everybody here, he's, he's recusing himself.
I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we, we have, did.
You have a motion, but we don't have a second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
There is some discussion. I just, somehow I want the people in Sunnyside to know that we are just as intent in increasing their economic development as we are in trying to get it on Arthur K. Because that's the first place that people get to when they come in Spalding County. So we just need for them to know that we are going to be driving in on trying to bring them up to where we are in the rest of the county.
Great point. Thank you for saying that. Thank you very much for all of us.
Yeah.
All right, uh, all those that. Have we voted?
Yeah, yeah.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, zero, uh, we're unanimous.
Upstate, one abstention.
Uh, okay, uh, consider approving a resolution to set election qualifying fees for each county office that will be elected via general primary, general election, and nonpartisan election in twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
All right, it's all in there. If you haven't looked back on how much everybody has to do for qualifying. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Uh, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
But it's three percent of whatever the base salary is, right?
Correct.
Not for everyone. No, it is not. That's not.
Which ones aren't?
For some, it's net for others. It's controlled by statute, so.
Oh, it's gross for some, it's net for others?
Yes.
But it's, it's still like three percent based on.
It's base for some, which is not, I mean, base is different from, from gross or net.
Okay.
Yeah, this took us a few days to.
But it's still like designed around, it's not a number we picked, it's a percentage.
No, it's not a number we picked. It's statutorily defined.
All right.
Okay.
One, once again, a vote that.
Once again, what?
Once again, no, no, it's a vote that we're.
Yes, I agree.
Statutorily defined as opposed to something that we're really.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, sir. I think I made a motion to approve that resolution.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Thank you. Uh, item number five, uh, a discussion on, uh.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks and, uh, the extended share of money on fire trucks that we have to do immediately.
Um, so. It's a lot of money. Not, yeah, not to go back through the entire document, but I would present to the board a, for consideration, the opportunity to make a purchase of a fire engine. Uh, kudos to, uh, Chief Byrd for getting us into a position where, instead of waiting forty months to, uh, to obtain a fire truck for the, the ability to, um, satisfy the totaled fire truck from the accident last month. I dare you to say that fast three times. Um, we are in a position where the company had a vehicle coming down the line and the jurisdiction removed themselves from the purchase. Uh, the company placed it out for consideration from other jurisdictions, and we were paying very close attention. They called us and we put in a letter of request asking them to hold it for fourteen days. Uh, the truck was totaled in December and this opportunity became available for us last Thursday afternoon. Uh, the, the opportunity is for us to take delivery March, the first week of March, for the fire truck to replace the vehicle that was totaled during the motor vehicle accident. Not our fault. Uh, our, our guys did a wonderful job at making sure everything was taken care of and there was no loss of life. Uh, but the, uh, the vehicle, the re- the replacement of that vehicle is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the, for the purchase. Uh, just as a point of reference, uh, the vehicle that was totaled was purchased in two thousand and seven for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And at the end of twenty, I'm sorry.
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
Yes.
In twenty twenty-one, when the, this board, um, took into consideration the strategic purchasing plan for the fire department, uh, the vehicle that was purchased then was six hundred and fifty thousand. One year later, uh, additional vehicles were purchased and the price at that time was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The price today is nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and forty-month lead time for the construction of the vehicle.
Forty months.
Forty months. Uh, and each year, and we were told this two years ago, each year, uh, the supply chain increase for this vehicle has gone up thirty-five percent. That's a significant increase to burden. Uh, staff has gone through and reviewed all of the documentation. They have reviewed all of the, uh, uh, the cost associated with, uh, this purchase. Uh, during the break between the workshop and our Board of Commissioners meeting this evening, we do have the funds coming in that will satisfy the purchase price of the vehicle uh, through a financing, a finance program. Uh, and we feel confident that with the information that we shared back with the board that this is the right way for us to move forward to replace this vehicle. And we would offer that for consideration by the board.
So, Mr. Chairman, my questions in the, in the workshop were, will there be enough revenue in the fire tax to offset what the payment would be for these four veh- vehicles under lease purchase? And based on what, uh, Chief Byrd said, there would be at least a three hundred, three hundred plus thousand increase in the fire tax. So, so they will be able to absorb that in their regular budget, which I, I just don't have a problem with that, using somebody else's money, low interest rates, but we've got to have fire trucks. We, we.
Forty months for trying to get it. This is a real freak thing, if you want to know. Somebody did not pay, said they canceled theirs and they, uh, it was on the line. And they said, okay, you can have it. If it hadn't been for that, we'd be in deep trouble and we would have to start talking about a different way of doing the business.
I, I live on High Falls Road, and I can guarantee you that at least twice a day, there's a fire truck that has to go out to do something. So if we're down like three trucks, we can't, we can't operate like that. We need those other two. When will the other two come?
The other two vehicles will be here at the end of February, so we should be taking possession of two at the end of February. And then if you decide to move this one forward, the third one the first week of March.
I better hold our breath and hope they care before we have to ride a bicycle to a fire.
But look, it's, it's not just that, though. I mean, when, the other day, we had so many firemen sick, we were gonna have to close down fire stations. And that's including using our inmate firefighters, who are fantastic, but like, we, we've really got to do something. Not that our firemen aren't doing the right thing, not our fire chiefs, they're doing the best they can with it, but with the extremely limited funding they have, the fire, um, the fire tax district is two-point-nine.
Uh, it's four-point-three.
Four-point-three. I, I.
We've got to look at that.
We've got it, we've got to look, look at that this year. I mean, I, they came before us and we were gonna raise the general mileage rate so that we could pay firemen and we could buy, you know, like.
This is a long ways off. I'm sorry. Is this, would this be something we would put on a T-sploß?
What, for the fire?
A T-sploß.
Or just a regular sploß? I know we've done this before, haven't we?
Fire trucks will sponsor you.
Yes, we can put this on a sploß. Uh, we have other more higher priorities that need to go on a sploß. Um, we, we have a lot to discuss over this year.
I mean, we've paid for fire trucks out of sploß before. I don't know that it's a truck, it's a fire truck, is it really transportation? You know what I'm saying?
That's why I said.
So that, that, you know, is the parking lot transportation.
Right, right.
So, so, yeah, but just, just for today, I think it is important that we agree that, that they need to get that one truck that is available, because that's a bird in the hand. And hopefully, by the end of this, in the next month, we'll have the other two fire trucks.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, yes, sir. You have a motion to, well, we were just supposed to discuss the fire truck. Did we say we were going?
We said we're gonna go ahead and approve it because he needs to know now, because we're gonna lose them out.
Can we approve empowering our fire chief to take the necess- actions he seems necessary? So if he works out that he can get a better price upfront, or if he finances, we talked about some of those options. Instead of like limiting him to one, just say, hey, you're empowered to make a call on that and spend the money that you need to, whichever way you.
So basically give him the authority up to the amount.
You see what I'm saying, like?
To make whatever.
Yeah, can you make the motion so that we can make the purchase of the fire truck? And then we will bring back to you what the final cost and the financing is going to be, because we have to do that anyway.
Yeah.
We have to bring the financing back to you.
Okay, y'all want me to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, oh, hey. Motion to approve the purchase of the, uh, not that one. Of, up to nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a new truck that we are going to get from Sudfin.
Correct, yes ma'am.
Sudfin.
It's good.
Okay, is that, is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Same second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Uh, five, zero. Uh, this is great work that the fire people did to find this, get it, and get it to us in time to be able to do something.
Right. And I appreciate them bringing the numbers back so that we know that it's nothing, something that's gonna hit the general fund, our general fund.
Between, uh, we had a workshop at three o'clock that this was discussed in. And between three o'clock and, uh, before this meeting, they had to go and redo the numbers and bring them back and, uh, let Commissioner Flowers-Taylor go through them in some detail to be able to satisfy that we understood what this was about. So, uh, we appreciate what all the fire people did.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I have the next thing as item number thirteen, report of the county manager.
Item number six, uh, Mr. Chairman, Board of Elections.
Oh, oh, excuse me, yes, Board of Elections. Um, all right, uh, do I, are you making a motion?
I'm just trying to understand what it is that we're doing.
They're.
Move money, moving money.
They want to move inside their budget, eight thousand from one line item to another. We were discussing earlier which line item it wa- it can be. They wanted it to be from insurance, but even though that's allotted to their budget, insurance is done through HR. So we were worried if they can, if that, if that could move, and I don't know if we got a real answer, because it's eight, it's only eight thousand dollars that they want to move. Um, but.
Irregardless of that, they want permission to move eight thousand dollars inside their budget for, uh, a raise to the supervisor.
So, absolutely not. And I'll tell you why. Because there's other people that work in that building. And I don't think that they work any less hard than Kim. I think Kim does an awesome job. But if you're going to give somebody a raise, the raise is not happening just because the boss is doing all the work. There are four, I mean, I, I think there's four permanent people and two part-time people. Now, I get it, you don't want to give the people who are your volunteer poll workers a raise. But taking, so first of all, if you take eight thousand dollars and give the supervisor a raise, what are you setting the morale up for the rest of the people who are working their butts off, dealing with all these absentee ballots and, and, and those other stuff? You've worked as a poll worker. Uh, secondly, as an increase, we didn't vote for any increases this year. And if that money goes to a salary, now, if they were saying this is going to a bonus, I might even have some consideration for that. But when you put eight thousand dollars in a salary now, that's gonna be back here next year, meaning that that salary's increased. Um, the person that was in that job, Marcia, I forget what her last name was, had to have a master's degree in order to draw the salary she was dr- drawing. I don't, I don't know, Kim may have a bachelor's degree, but she certainly doesn't have a master's degree. She doesn't have twenty-five years, not, she doesn't even have twenty years of experience in elections as a supervisor. So I get it, everybody wants more money, but we need to be fair. That's why the people at the county didn't get a pay raise, because we couldn't share the wealth among anybody. So I, I, I mean, I, I'm just one person. I think.
Can I ask the question?
Yeah.
Um, and we're talking about monies that's in their current budget.
Right.
Which means that they're not coming to ask us for anything additional.
That's right.
I think that we had a conversation, I'm thinking the sheriff may have been something very similar.
Exactly.
So I'm thinking, you know, and I'm, this is just, I hear what you're saying, but because we're not authorizing any increases. We haven't done that or any raises, but if it's in within their own budget, why are they coming to us anyway? And they can't, they do what they want to do within their budget as long as they don't come back to us?
That, that was my initial response as well, but I think the new legislation specifically says that they.
Oh, we do? I get it, but, but it's still their budget. I mean, that's what I'm trying to, why are we, why are they coming to us?
So the way our budget works, the way our policy works, you can move from, um, from payroll down to take care of any overages, but you can't move from what's underneath payroll up to that, uh, line item. It has to come before you for consideration for, uh, making that transition. And payroll is one at the top is, uh, at the top of the highest order for our, uh, budget. And in order for them to move out of benefits into the payroll side, we have to bring it to you for consideration.
So let me ask you about the pay study that we've, we've been talking about. So where are we on that? Before we do anything, see, like you said, we've, we've got to look at everyone here. I can, I, I, trust me, I think Kim does a wonderful job at what she does. But to be transparent, I'm saying that word again, you know, and in sync, where are we on, on the pay study to know where everyone actually gets this?
Yes, ma'am, we, we actually, um, contracted for a pay study in November and we will complete that pay study with the consultants coming and presenting to you for consideration at the end of February.
Okay, I, I, I would like to kind of at least wait for that pay study to come back. Not saying that we can't do it, but I'd like to see across the board what that look like. And then figure out what we're gonna do with the others as well. I, I, I'd feel comfortable with that.
What if, what if we empowered them to, to spend their budget, sort of like what Gwen suggested, not necessarily as a, as a salary increase, because we don't know what that pay study is gonna come back. Would we come and say, like, a one-time, you know.
Bonus.
Bonus payment or something. I mean, I don't know if we can give bonuses, you know.
Well, as a board, they can do what they want to.
You see what I'm saying? But then, but then, because we, then that doesn't lock us in.
Right, no salary increases. Because.
That, that way, it checks the box of what they want to do, which is, you know.
And they've managed their budget.
Right, right, right.
But I, but I, what I can say to you is that.
Salary change until.
The other people that work in that department, who listen to this meeting and who knows what's going on, are, are gonna be wondering, why is it that she's able to get a bonus and we're, we're not?
They should all be included in the, the pay scale study though, right?
Yes.
And then, yeah.
I don't think we do anything until the pay study comes back.
Uh, I, I, I think we're in trouble if we don't. I think we're in a really bad position. But again, it comes back to that, that triangle we were talking about, right? Really good services, low, uh, uh, low taxes, and yet we don't want our, our sort of rural community to look any different than it does right now. We want everything to stay the same, but we want our taxes to get smaller and yet our services to get better. So when we put really awesome people in place like Kim, and then we offer them, you know, just like we have, our, our, our pay is.
For everybody.
For everybody, it's pretty visible. And, and so, well, these three prongs on the triangle, they, they can't, they can't just stay the same. You're either going to increase taxes, or you're going to decrease service level.
Right.
Or you're going to build more industrial and, and larger-scale commercial.
So first of all, y'all know you're all not gonna increase taxes, so that's not even a conversation that I can even see coming out of your mouth.
That's what I'm talking about.
So, so, but, but the other thing is that I didn't have a problem with this when, when, after we did our budget and the sheriff's department came to us and told us they wanted to use their funding, because it is a departmental budget. But make no mistake, we all know that whatever that percentage was that the people at, in, in law enforcement got, that's it. That is going to stay, even if we get the pay raise that comes later and they, and they get that like everybody else does, we are not gonna back back out of the raise that they got. So, so that's what I need. So, so that's what I need, I'm trying to understand, is that theirs is a different situation. The sheriff's a constitutional officer, he calls a shot the best that he can for his folks. So, so I'm, I'm, I'm all into that, I get it, I understand. But if we do it for the Board of Elections, then what's to stop TJ from doing it in public works or demanding to do it? Or Kelly to do it in leisure services, or planning and development, they don't have any code enforcement people. So can we take that salary that we would have for code enforcement and give our folks a raise? It's opening a Pandora's box.
Mr. Chairman, the only real difference that I see here is that the Board of Elections and voter registration is actually the employer for the election supervisor and her staff. You are not.
No, we're not, but we do control the money.
Exactly.
But only, but only, uh, the total that goes into that.
Right.
They, they report out of a courtesy all the line items, sort of like the sheriff does, but we don't control all their individual gross budget.
We need to send it back to them and let them basically control their money and award her however they see fit.
Yeah, and so.
That's what they need to do.
Now, I, I don't think that they can increase her salary.
We should, we should vote, yes, it's y'all's money, we've allocated your money, we're not going to give you anymore. Y'all, inside your budget, can do what you want with your budget, just like the sheriff can.
So when you get ready to do their budget next year, and the elections board, uh, election director's salary is eight thousand dollars more than it was this year, which is not in our, in our pay plan as it stands, based on time and experience, which is how she ended up getting hired at the rate that she did, how is that fair to the rest of the four hundred other people that we have working here who are in the same situation and can't get the same benefit because they're?
We, we cut their budget by fifty thousand dollars this year.
Who, who are we talking about, the election board of elections?
Eighty-five thousand dollars.
Eighty-five, excuse me, eighty-five thousand, you see what I'm saying, like? And it, it, it wasn't based on where you made this.
No, we didn't cut their budget, they asked for eighty-five thousand dollars more and we didn't give it to them.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that's a difference, I'm thinking that's a difference.
It's a difference.
Because some other people ask us for money and we told them they couldn't get it. So that, to me, that was, that was no different. I, I want everybody who is here that has the ability to get money to get it. But, but, and everybody in the sheriff's department got it, but everybody in elections, will, will they all get it? You see what I'm saying? So.
That's up to their board, they employ those people.
Right, so, but just as long as they understand that when you come back next year, don't come to us saying, this is a salary of our elections person, we need you to budget for that, because that's not the job description that we have. Everybody's salary is based on a pay study, on time, experience, education. And if we start willy-nilly and picking out who we want to let get money, I, I mean, I totally get it. They are in charge of their money and it's in their budget, but, but I just know that when it comes back to me next year.
Yeah.
Everybody needs to get the same thing.
I don't, I don't think we need to vote, I mean, if, whatever is within our power to send it back to them, let them decide on what they want to do.
You want to do what you want to do.
No, right, we're not approving anything.
Yeah, yeah.
We're letting them make their own decision.
It's their departmental budget.
That's this year's money, we're talking about.
Right.
For twenty-twenty-four to July.
Yeah, one July, they can do that money to be able to do it, but when it gets to one July, that money is not going to be there like it is.
We back to the game plan.
Yes, they have to, they have to come back to the normal budgeting process, but I think, I think that solves their problem.
Their immediate problem.
So as long as you're calling it a pay increase, it doesn't solve their problem?
It doesn't solve ours either.
Because all the pay increases hopefully will happen when the pay study comes back for everybody, but in the meantime, they're totally empowered to, on their own, go and make whatever changes inside their own budget they want to make.
What's the mechanism? Do we ask the county managers to move those funds?
You just report.
Can you step up to the, uh, to Mike a second?
I'm sorry, I have a throat problem, and so it's a little bit difficult for me to, to speak. But I'm sorry, what was the question and, and?
So you said to us, how do we, what's the mechanism to be able to do that?
Does that go through finance, does it go to the county? Who, who makes that happen? Because we were told that we could not do what I've just asked you to do.
It goes through HR and it, and in order for it to change in HR, you have to approve that it changes in HR. My question to you, sir, Mr. McLean.
Yes, ma'am.
The direction from the county manager is, his pers, uh, HR works for him. So he has to direct them to change those things in pay.
When will that happen?
Okay.
So y'all have to meet.
We've already met, we've already met, we voted, uh, our attorney is here to answer that question.
Our hope tonight is to vote to empower you to do with your budget what you need to do with your employees, because you're the employer of.
With, within the total approved budget.
Within that total approved budget.
So I have a question before you leave the podium.
Now, what that total approved budget is going to be next year.
Right. And that's till one July.
Um, what, what is your plan for the other employees down there?
So, a couple of things, number one, Kim doesn't get overtime. And so all the other employees do, and that's caused a, a rift between the, the amount of her, uh, her income and the amount of time that she has to put in. Everybody else has gotten a, a part of a raise or a raise this year. And we have two new employee, one, one new employee, don't quote me there, we have at least one new employee and two that are returning. And so those salaries were all commensurate. But if you look, and I've provided all this documentation to the board, uh, on at least one occasion, I think, uh, Commissioner Davis maybe even sent it out to the rest of commissioners. If you look at the amount that the department head makes versus all the other department heads in the county, she's almost ten thousand dollars under every other department head. Also, her job description does not include getting sued, getting depositions, all of those things that go along with being the election supervisor.
But she knew that when she took the job.
No, ma'am, that was not in the job description.
But, but it's not in the job description that you hold a liability. It, when Kim worked there as a technician or as a whatever she was, a voter registration person, we always had suits coming into the Board of Elections, because people reported to the Secretary of State and made complaints. What I'm asking you is, when anybody else comes into this to start, to work for the county, if you come in as a deputy, you have one year of experience, your pay is going to be vastly different than a deputy that comes in with five years or ten years of experience.
Absolutely.
Kim had zero experience.
No, ma'am, that's not true.
Wait a minute, I, I, absolutely, that is not correct. When Kim left, she was the voter registration lady, when, when Marcia came in. Before that, Kim was not qualified to be the election supervisor. She did not go to school anywhere to become more qualified, she does not have a master's degree in public service or public, um, public elections, none of that. So why would she come in making the same thing as Kelly Carmichael, who's been here twenty years, TJ, who's been here twenty-five, anybody else who's been here ten? Her salary does, she don't, you, nobody gets to walk in the door with very little experience. Now, I'm not, y'all do what you want to, but I'm telling you, that's why her pay is where it is, because she was hired based on her experience, her education, and the amount of time that she has had as a supervisor and as a director of elections and registration.
As one of the peop, one of the five people unanimously that hired her, I was part of that negotiating process, you were not.
No, but when you came, Mr. McLean, you were brand new. You were green, and you really didn't know anything about the elections board either, did you? I've been here twenty years, I've worked with the election board for that amount of time. So when I share with you that there's a reason why her pay was listed at that level based on what the county says, that is why. And I get it, everybody wants money, but we want it to be fairly distributed.
Then let's be fair.
Yeah, and, and so when, when you say to me, people got a pay raise, who? Did anybody get a pay raise this year?
Yeah, two percent.
Yeah, two percent.
Was it two percent or a cost of living increase?
It was two percent, that included the cost of living.
Okay, so did Kim get the same cost of living increase as everybody else? Okay, I'm just.
All right, it's my motion that.
Do what you want to. Um, I just, I think I made my point that we're, we're not in the business of letting people start, starting to orchestrate what they want to do in terms of determining what people's base salaries are. They have a right to do that if they want to, but if they want to work under our personnel system, then our personnel system should be fair and just for everybody.
It's my motion that we reaffirm the independent authority that the elections board has to do with their budget, what they want to do, uh, and that, of course, is this year's budget ending June thirty. How much that total budget is for next year will be up to the next budgeting process. But to reaffirm from the county that their budget, as allotted to them this year, is their budget, and they can do with it what they want.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Um, no.
I'll defer the discussion with the understanding that this affects all departments, and if this happened with all departments, we have that same sentiment with them, same thing. We have departments that come to, if, in fact, if it happens that way.
It's gonna happen.
Then we got to be ready to do it.
They have a board.
Uh, again, we, we're the employer, so the county is the employer of, like, the, the Parks Department, like the public works.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
We're not the employer of the elections supervisors.
I get that.
What, like, we're not. We, we supervise that budget, but it's an ancillary sort of bubble.
When I talk about morale and things like that.
Right.
The work can, I'm talking about things that, you know, we, that is going to be an issue is what I'm trying to say. I mean, I understand the money, but it's gonna, it's gonna be an issue, I'm okay with it, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and vote along with you. But the bottom line is, just like everything else, we've just got to be ready for it.
But it's, it's almost, it's one step closer in bubbles, but it's almost like the, um, development authority. They get to choose what they spend their budget on. Now, they're an authority, so they're even one more step separated. This is almost like an authority, but it still kind of reports underneath our, you know, HR. But like, they're still not our employees. So we just give them a budget and then they take that budget and do what they want with it. And it's the same with these other kind of, you know what I'm saying? So the people that are directly in our, that are actually in our bubble, like, that's, that's a much more direct thing that's.
Yeah, I mean, go, do what you gotta do, I'm just saying, I want the public, it to be on the public record.
Yes.
That, that we're not in the business of giving one person in a department a raise when it takes everybody in the department. Okay, but I'm just saying, we're not doing it, but that's what they're doing, so you get what you get.
Like, it's their budget.
Then it shouldn't be here in the first place, but I don't know, we say that.
I don't think they need to come to us, I think, I think they should just be able to do it, but.
So really.
Just like the sheriff can do.
The issue is not them being able to spend the money, the issue is about this, uh, county manager telling HR, allow them to move that line, which is where the money.
I think that you have to, where, is Erica here? You have to put in a budget amendment for that to be. And then someone has to make a request for budget amendment, then it has to come to us to be able to amend the budget. You can't just, because there's some steps that have to happen before that happens, right, Steve?
Yes, ma'am, it's my understanding from the decision tonight that, um, you're authorizing me to make that transition and then bring back in, uh.
The amendment.
Last January meeting, the budget amendment for you to agree to.
Okay. So those are the steps, we have to amend the budget, and then the money can get moved, be moved.
Inside your.
Inside your, your stuff.
So will that be in two weeks or a month or?
The second, the twenty-second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not real sure, because we got to have RFP in a month.
He's got it from last year, you can copy him, please.
Very good point.
All right, can we do that by the twenty-second at the end of this?
It's true.
All right.
So hopefully, it will be a month then, or something.
Yeah, by the twenty-second, the next, our next meeting. Have that read to go.
Okay.
Do we need to do any more on this?
You have a motion and a second on the floor.
A motion and a second on the floor, you need to vote.
To, to do what?
Uh, the motion was to reaffirm the move of eight, uh, roughly eight thousand dollars, um, in the budget for.
In the elections, the budget.
Reaffirm the move of eight thousand dollars.
They voted to move.
Right.
And they've come to us for permission to see that move through, and we've gone, yep, you can move your money how you want to move your money.
So, so the, the motion should be that we told them that they can do what they want to do?
Yep.
Okay, is that what the motion?
That's the motion, but going through the steps through the county manager.
Who, who made it?
Me.
James.
Oh, okay, man, all right, I'll second it, since we figured it out. Okay.
Okay, all right, does everybody understand?
Mm-huh.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
We got, we got what you wanted, you got what you wanted.
All right, five, zero. All right, I'm back to item number thirteen, uh, report of the county manager, ballgame starts soon.
Oh, yeah.
Last ballgame was in December.
It finally showed up. So, just so everyone is aware, please, please pay attention this evening. There's powerful storm system that's expected to impact all of North Georgia this evening. It includes heavy rain, strong and severe thunderstorms, and high winds. If you have not signed up for Civic Plus, or Civic Ready, please forgive me, Civic Ready, please go do so, so that you can pay attention from our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center this evening, which has been partially stood up, and that's the, um, that's the latest information that I've received from Chief Polk. They stood it up about an hour and a half ago, because they are concerned that this, um, this weather system is going to impact our community.
Steve, I have a question.
Please.
So we're, what, to January the eighth, four days from now is when we got tore up before?
That's correct.
So do, I wanted to ask Glenn and them, do we have extra, um, horns, tornado?
We do, we have.
Thingies to let people know if that, someone finds out and it's the middle of the night?
We have stood up four additional, um, tornado sirens in the county.
Okay.
But, again, we would really emphasize the need for our community to download the Civic Ready app to your phones, because the sirens are only good for approximately one mile from where the siren is located, and we are a community of two hundred and four square miles.
Okay.
Uh, so please pay attention to the weather this evening. To follow on with that, uh, the twenty-twenty-three tornado community update. Friday, January the twelfth, at the, at the Kiwanis Club of Griffin, our community is hosting an event in remembrance of the January twelfth, twenty-twenty-three tornadoes. So, um, i- if you're in the area around the Kiwanis, um, facility on Ju, uh, January the twelfth, please stop by and thank all of our emergency responders for the great work that they did over the course of the last twelve months. Just as an aside, um, we have received approximately two-thirds of the monies in reimbursement from FEMA and GEMA. Very pleased, very happy to report that. Chief Polk has done just a phenomenal job to get us in a position where all of the paperwork has been submitted, and we are awaiting the final tranche of money that's going to be delivered to us. We're expecting that within the next, uh, forty-five to sixty days, so more to come there.
What time is the, the thing on Friday?
It's at ten to, ten to three. Thought it was extended just a little bit, but yeah, please come by between ten and twelve and thank our community, um, public servants. The fiscal year twenty-three audit, the preliminary draft, has been received from Malden and Jenkins. Uh, staff is reviewing material and will make a doc, make the document available as soon as the final report is received. The document indicates that we are in very good financial position. Our aquatic center, the contractor, will begin filling the pool this week, and the pool management company will begin their responsibilities within the next few, uh, within the next two weeks to get ready for an opening of the aquatic center. Uh, T-Splats update, Director Imberger, TJ is working with Paragon to bid this next phase of our resurfacing work. Very pleased to report that we have completed, uh, year one and year one resurfacing. Uh, the only thing that lacks for, uh, year two is the thermoplasty striping of the roads. Uh, it looks like we will need to wait until March or April to complete that work, because the weather is trending very cold and it's hard to put that material down until the, the weather warms up just a bit. But that actually puts us in a position where, uh, we can complete year three, and it looks like we're going to be well in range for the monies coming in for our T-Splats to complete year three. Very pleased with the, the reporting process of finishing year one, finishing year two, and not having to expend any of year three money to finish year two. So good for the team, they've done a great job with that.
So that's fifty miles of resurfacing?
That's fifty miles of resurfacing, yes, ma'am. Uh, fifty miles out of four hundred and seventy-some odd miles of road, but that is a tremendous effort for the team, very, very pleased. Uh, the BOC retreat, our retreat is scheduled for January nineteenth and twentieth in La Grange. If the board members have not had the opportunity to speak with the facilitator, please let me know, and we'll make sure that that time schedule is, uh, is set. Again, back to the RFPs, Spalding County has issued RFPs for our financial software package. Uh, we're expecting to. We're expecting to hear, we're expecting to provide you with more information next month on that. And we are also completing the review and submission of the RFP for our master park plan for, for this year. Both of those are a, a lot of work. And in fact, the RFP for the, for the financial software package was sixty-one pages to ensure that we had all the material. And the RFP for the master plan is not too far behind that. So kudos to TJ and Kelly for putting the mark, uh, master park plan together and kudos to Erica for putting the financial software package, RFP, together. GRPA, we have approximately three hundred professionals in our community this week representing many, many jurisdictions across the state. They are attending GRPA training and the President's Council. I believe, Mr. Chairman, you and I are scheduled for dinner tomorrow and the rest of you are invited to attend tomorrow for the, the dinner with the professionals. And then I believe, Mr. Chairman, you were speaking on Wednesday to the, to the session. I will be away from the office on Wednesday and Thursday of this week and the fourth of fifth, fourth of five training sessions with the University of Georgia on data analytics. And we'll be back on Friday. It appears that we have some additional follow-on meetings for, for the roads and the airport with GDOT on Friday. So more to come at our next BOC meeting. Mr. Chairman, that's my update.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay. So I got a chance to go home for a few minutes after our work session. I don't know if you all did or not, but when you do go home, you're gonna see it was, we were given suit papers delivered to us today. We all have them, you know, and the reason why I just kind of bring that up ironically as we, as we talk about these RFPs and the decision has been made is, like I said, had these RFPs have been done ninety days ago and we have awarded the contract today, we just don't want there's any breach. Puts the county in legal jeopardy, possibly, but just know you've got, you've got paper, suit papers waiting on you when you get home. So however this works out, whoever awards the contract, hopefully it's the same firms, but know that we're gonna have, have to work to get these folks up to speed. And it's discounting loyalty that we actually have after all these years. Just kind of saddened by that. It's not like how that process went, but I understand. That's it.
All right. Mr. Baldwin?
I'd like to first thank y'all for voting me in as your vice chair. It's gonna be an awesome learning experience and I really do, I know we may have differences of opinion sometimes, but I, I learn a lot from all of y'all and it's gonna be a great learning experience. Last week was a very sad time for the community, but, and I hate that it takes a sad event, a tragic event like that to bring the community together. I wish people would be loving and show support to our law enforcement and, uh, public safety period all the time. I mean, it was very, I just sat back and watched the people. I mean, that is, it was, I was at awe. And I hate, I hate for it to be in, for the circumstances, but it's just, I mean, I was like, wow. And during the county manager's statements there, he said something that made me happy and I'm gonna tell him, good job, but the Malden Jenkins report, that FY two thousand twenty-three audit, the document indicates we are in very good financial position. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just sitting here with my mouth open because y'all know I do not trust that audit report. But yeah, on paper, yeah, it sounds good. Okay, first thing I wanted to say is I'm going home and putting the Civic Ready app on mine. I didn't realize how close we were to the time of the year when we got tore all up last year. And it just gives me the creeps thinking about it. So, yeah, I, I, I'm glad that they're doing the recognition, but it kind of puts me in a, a state of paranoia and anxiety that here we are having this report for a storm tonight that will potentially put us in, in the way of a tornado. So please, everybody, pay attention, call your children, call your mama, tell her to put her radio, whoever. I just, just hate to think of the thought of how people woke up a year ago with nothing, trees in their houses and all other kind of stuff. And, and you're right, Steve, the tornado horns are good on that side, but apparently tornadoes show us, they don't necessarily got to come from one way. They can just come from everywhere and get you. So, um, yes, definitely we want to keep the neighborhood on alert about that. James, I miss fussing with you. We didn't have them two meetings the last time. But just want y'all to know, I agree with you. I to, I totally agree with you. Just wanted to be fair. If we're gonna do one, let's do everybody. We all, and I'm, and I'm not just dumping this on Steve, we all have a responsibility to make sure we come back and say, where is the RFP paperwork?
Yep, yep.
We just, I mean, you said it was a bad year last year and it was. But when I think about all the stuff that was going on with the tornado, I'm pretty sure that that was the last thing on the chairman and Steve's mind was getting together an RFP. So, so let's, let's all just put our brains together and try to make sure we can kind of push that agenda forward. I was looking for Chief Polk. Is he still in here?
No, ma'am. They, they went home to get some rest because they're worried about.
Okay, so hopefully he's not watching, but I saw on the email where the ACCG Award of the Year is coming up. And after I think about their performance and his performance, not just during the, the height of the tornado, but throughout this whole year, I'm still going back digging up emails where he's emailing us and texting us at two o'clock in the morning saying the other meet, the next meeting's at six. So that's an opportunity for us to maybe showcase one of our own. So I would love it if we can consider putting in, him in for an ACCG Award of Excellence because.
You know, we could probably try to build on that on both TJ and Bird.
I, I think as a whole, the community, I mean, we all did good, but, and, and I'm not taking anything from anybody, but when you go to anywhere and you hear somebody talking about emergency management, the first thing they say is Spalding County and Glenn Polk.
Yep, absolutely agree.
Because he, he, he wrote the guidebook and he followed it. And, and it's a, it's a, a base standard for anybody experiencing tornadoes now in the state that they follow this plan.
Yes, ma'am. That's why he is the EMA Director of the Year for the state of Georgia.
And so just, you know, I would love to see us, to see us do that. I'm looking forward to this year. There's a lot of exciting stuff that's gonna be going on. Me and Ryan are gonna get a chance to help to create the ordinances that we will need to, to move economic development forward.
And put the boundaries on it.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm, we fuss, but I, we, I think we're all on the same team, just in case anybody didn't know.
Thank you.
That's how family does.
Yep.
All right, I'm done.
In, in the, in the Israeli parliament called the Knesset, all their subcommittees have a rule that if everyone agrees, the last person to vote has to disagree and argue because you haven't thought it all the way through if you're not, if you're all on the same page. We don't have that problem here. So I, and I appreciate that, that, that we can, we can talk about it and yet at the end of the day, we're still, we're still friends, we're still, you know what I mean? We could disagree about stuff and yet still move forward. Uh, I think we can, I think Washington DC can learn a lot from watching us right here. The, the leadership that our county has is second to none. And I'm not talking about us five, we just happen to sit here. Talking about our amazing, amazing county manager, our incredible sheriff, and everybody else that won the award for being the best in the state. This county last year took a beating. Oh, I mean, not just economically, not just with the tornadoes, just one thing after another. We, we had an officer murdered in the line of duty. I mean, and yet our county rises to the equation every time and it will, and it will, and it will. I gotta say, I'm gonna try to hold it together. I was moved by that funeral. I was holding it together and trying to be stoic and when, I don't wanna cry, think about it. When they started folding that flag, and then I was able to kind of get it back together. And Sheriff, when you hit your knee, man. And handed that flag over. There is not enough that we can do to support you and that family and the entire Spalding County Sheriff's Department family. Anything we can do, we're here for you. I have, uh, these last two weeks, I've been traveling the state pretty extensively and a lot of people have traveled here to talk to me. And everyone talks about how great of a sheriff we have and how sad they were by the census violence. And I was honored, honored, honored to see all the folks that turned out. Let me move on from something, something nicer. We haven't talked about tonight and I'm, I'm, so I'm worried. Next Monday is Martin Luther King Day. Are we doing a parade? Is there a plan? Do we, like, we should, we should be doing a parade. There should be a thing happening. Yandere, I'm gonna head shake. Okay, I wanna be there. I hope y'all are all there. We might have to notice it as a meeting because of all of the show up, but we need to, like, that's, that's super important, guys. And then I just, on the, not to end on a bad note, but those numbers, three hundred and forty thousand dollars for a fire truck in seventeen, six hundred thousand for a fire truck in twenty-one, seven hundred and fifty thousand the cost of fire truck in twenty-two, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, three times what it was six years ago, and a forty-month lead time. Things have got to change. That's not a county issue. That is, that's a problem, a fundamental problem with the Build Back Better strategy, but we all need to pray and ask for, for something to happen, not just nationwide, but globally. Because if that trend continues, next year, that's gonna be over a million dollars. In three years, they're gonna be nearly two million dollars. And how many months of a, of a lead up?
Thirty-seven percent?
Thirty-seven percent year over year.
I mean.
So we'll be driving a golf cart with a big water hose on it.
Seriously. But at the same time, we still gotta have enough money to fund the fire department. So we, as a board, we need to look at that, that fire fund amount. They, they came and they said, how many fire, uh, firemen they were down? It was like thirty firemen they were down? They were having to close fire stations? That's, that's not okay. That, that's, firemen aren't optional. Like parks are optional. We like parks, but no one's dying if they don't have a park. Like, people literally have died this year in home fires. And, and here we are having to, you know, balance, well, we're gonna close this one today and maybe we can put one officer over there, or one fireman over there. We gotta revisit that. We gotta revisit that, that triangle.
Our ISO rating, too.
An RISO rating.
Okay, thank you. One, thank you, James, for your time as the vice. I have relied on you and I appreciate what you have done this entire time. I'd like to comment also on the funeral that the sheriff put on. I was not in uniform, so I did not get into the, and that was an unusual circumstance for me who've been in uniform most of my life. So I was with the spouses and I will tell you that when the rifles were fired, there were tears everywhere, not just rolling down there, we're talking about sobbing. Mainly there was around a number of females who, you could hear them, oh, my husband, oh, my husband. I don't know if I can continue to put up with this. And this one looked over, this mother of one of them walked, looked over and she said, I hear what you're saying, but my son has never been more fired up. When I look in his eyes, I know the kind of DNA that's in him. I know that stopping him, I couldn't possibly do. So it's pretty, it was pretty moving and I, really well done. And I appreciate the governor coming and everything else, along with a number of our elected officials. The comment about us doing everything and being able to walk out and still hug and do all that. Diversity of thought is really, really important to me. I want to foster diversity of thought. I think that that is why we're elected. We bring different things to the board. We are, have to listen to people to be able to do that. So diversity of thought always is exciting to me. We all don't have to agree. We all work together for what we think is the best for our citizens, but it's important that we talk. We're feel, it's, if you just shut your mouth and don't say anything and passive, passively aggressively do something, it is absolutely wrong and I don't see that ever with us and I appreciate it. I wanna thank everybody that volunteered and turned their name in to be our appointment. That's hard to do. Nobody wants to do that and not get selected. I understand that. We know that there are still some positions open that people, we have for them. If you're interested in trying to help your government, we would love to have you. We would love to have everybody that wants to participate come forward. One of the things that we do is we pick the person for the right place and the right time. Just because somebody wasn't selected this time, next time does not mean they won't be selected. We'll be looking for different kinds of people as we move through this. I wanna make a comment about, early on about the RFP procedure that we talked about. Some of you know that we reduce the millage rate. Money is tight. We're working hard on trying to do that. The RFP procedure is important to me. It doesn't matter what organization. If we're spending money, we oughta be looking for how do we get the best return on our, our investment? And that may be history, that may be dollars, that may be different things to be able to do it. So the RFP process to me is really important. Getting contracts that say this is exactly what we're doing is important. And the reason I say that is we're going through something now with the airport that if we'd had the right contracts at the right time and not listened to people's words, we would be in much better shape to be able to do this. All right. Anything else from the county manager?
Yes, sir.
County attorney?
Yes, sir. No.
Clerk, citizen engagement? All right. Last minute call from the, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Thank you.
Okay, football game.
Seven three, in case you wanna know, Michigan.
Seven three.
No, 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 no. Sometimes you already know that it ain't gonna happen, but you still have to stand your ground.